All our meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. I did, I haven't heard from Mr. Hip. I did hear from Mr. Fulmer that he is running a few minutes late, um, but is on the way. So we're trying to figure a way to get all our books lined up here. So they can fit, so. Um, but, uh, item number one on our agenda is a presentation and discussion of the proposed FY twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget. Mr. Shaker, the floor is yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Everyone, and, uh, I know y'all have a nice size paperweight there in front of you. So we appreciate y'all reviewing that. Uh, you know, with a eighty four point four million dollar budget, there's a lot of different places to start, but, uh, I thought maybe the first thing I could do is just thank everyone who was involved, you know, administration, of course, you know, works hard on this, but all of our departments, uh, do too. And, you know, they understood the department heads going into the process that, um, you know, uh, it was going to be a challenging budget, a challenging fiscal year, which is pretty typical, you know, and this one was no different than, than any other budget process. And so they were asked to keep that in mind with their expenditure requests, and they did that, and, uh, came in with some very reasonable, I think, requests and some worthwhile endeavors. And unfortunately, it's just, you, you can't do everything. And so, you know, we just did the best we could in administration, uh, to, to identify the top priorities, working with them, working with the department heads, um, and then to ensure that those were included in the proposed budget for y'all. And, uh, we've brought to you a budget again that's, uh, totals, um, eighty two point four million, and I think I said eighty four, eighty two point four million. And, uh, if y'all don't mind, maybe I could just start with the all fund summary, and it's actually on the screens right now. I, I don't know if that would be easier for you or not. We've got it on the side here, and then, I know that's not the most convenient, but behind you too is a large screen. And I could just show you kind of, I guess, you could call this like the hundred thousand foot level view of the budget, and then we could just maybe kind of work our way down and, um, then open it up for any questions that y'all have or areas that you want to delve deeper into. But, uh, what this shows are, uh, all of the, uh, funds for the county. And you know, a fund is just really an accounting entity, and it's just got a collection of self balancing revenue and expenditure accounts. Um, it's a separate entity, a fiscal entity. And, um, you know, I think there's like a total of eleven different types of funds in three major categories, governmental, proprietary, and fiduciary. And at the county, we have, at least for the purposes of the budget, we have governmental funds, and there's five types, and we have four of them. Specifically, we have the general fund, uh, I believe we've got, I think it's thirteen, uh, is it thirteen? Yeah, thirteen special revenue funds. We've got a debt service fund and a capital projects fund. The capital projects fund, the seventy fund, is actually one fund, but we've got three types of, uh, or categories of expenditures within the fund. There is, uh, CPST twenty twenty two, which is the current, uh, iteration of CPST. Um, we've got CPST twenty sixteen, because we've got a couple of remaining projects that are being wrapped up. And then we've got capital projects as well. So, you know, you could kind of, what we tried to do was, uh, create three compartments, if you will, and put those expenditures within three compartments, just to make it a little easier to differentiate between the different types of projects. Um, but it technically is just one fund. And so you'll see that the general fund budget is recommended to a total forty point three million. Uh, that's a, a twenty two point six percent, um, increase when compared with the current budget. And I'll just kind of highlight that column. That's the recommended budget, the highlighted column now. Uh, but there are a number of things that play into that, and I'll, I'll try to summarize those for you here in a second. Um, but it's a seven point four million dollar increase. Uh, our special revenue funds are, are proposed a total three point one million and change, which is a six hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase, or about a twenty four point nine percent increase. But again, going back to, uh, funds and what they are, each one of those special revenue funds is a separate fund. So it's, it's, uh, and the same accounting rules apply to those that due to the general fund. Um, so I would think of those almost like thirteen separate general funds, if you will. I mean, these are, are separate entities. And when you move money between them, it's in the form of a transfer. You know, it's, it's an expenditure in one fund, and it shows up in revenue as the other, because they're accounted for completely separate. So, so you've got the thirteen special revenue funds. Um, the debt service fund is proposed at three hundred and seventy five thousand and change. And you'll see there's almost a six hundred and ninety thousand dollar decrease, and that's the result of, uh, some changes we would recommend to y'all in terms of how we handle our debt service. And specifically, what we're recommending is that our current lease purchases, which are actually a form of short-term borrowing, it's not long-term debt. And that's actually why most cities and counties use lease purchases, because it doesn't count towards the debt cap, because it's a form of, of short-term borrowing. Uh, the county's been, I think, made a really good decision to convert that into a long-term obligation by issuing a GO bond every year. And the proceeds from the GO bond made the payments on the lease purchases. Uh, and then a debt service levy that Donna levied, the county auditor levied, um, would generate the revenue to pay the bond off annually. So it's like we, we would issue a GO bond in December. It was in an amount sufficient to make the payments on the lease purchases, and then when the tax revenue came in by April, we could pay that bond off. What we're recommending in this budget is that we, uh, move away from that practice. And I'll show you a spreadsheet. The main reason why is because we've had so much inflation that it has created much more headroom and the cap that applies to property tax increases than y'all would ever want to take. And so we have the ability to reduce the debt service fund by moving the lease purchase to lease, we've got two remaining lease purchase agreements, moving those two lease purchase agreements over to general fund, moving an installment purchase revenue bond, which was used to do the public, I'm sorry, the public works complex, move it to general fund as well, reduce the debt levy, raise the operating levy. It has no impact on the taxpayers. There's no additional tax burden. What we would do is we would avoid about thirty five to forty grand in, uh, professional fees. Uh, the bond attorney, who does great work for the county, uh, and, uh, financial advisor, the Dodd-Frank Act, you know, you can't have a bond attorney advise you on issuing debt, because they, obviously their fees are based on how much you issue. So a financial advisor, when you add all that up, it would, it would save us about thirty five, forty thousand dollars a year. So that was the, the reason for the recommendation, but no, no impact on taxpayers. Um, and then the, like I mentioned, the capital projects fund is proposed at forty one point eight million, uh, which is a two point seven million dollar increase. And, and the bulk of that is the CPST, the twenty twenty two CPST projects, yeah. When you present all funds like this, like I mentioned, because these are different accounting entities, and, and when you move money between them, it's in the form of a transfer, you got to back the transfers out, or you're double counting them. And that's why you see that line there in red, less transfers. What that is, is this right here. Um, and these are the operating transfers. And you can see there's a, a one point one, now, almost one point two million dollar transfer from general fund to community services fund. That's where we cover the expenses of Piedmont Tech, the library, and disabilities and special needs. That money is actually booked in general fund, and then it's moved to the community services fund, which again is a special revenue fund, different fund with its own budget. Um, that money has to be transferred. So there's one point two million dollar roughly transfer there. There's a two million dollar transfer from general fund to the capital fund, and we just recommend that y'all do that in anticipation of capital projects, but not program it at this time. Wait until you have more information about where we stand with all of our capital projects, and then y'all can make a decision. You wouldn't have to amend the general fund budget, you'd amend the capital projects fund budget and decide how you want to spend that money. This just gets it to the capital project fund. And then there's an eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty nine dollar transfer to the airport fund, which again is a separate fund. It's a special revenue fund, uh, that we use to account for the airport, the county airport. Used to be an enterprise fund, but our auditors recommended that we reclassified as a special revenue fund, because a because a a enterprise fund is for business-type activity. Like, the city uses it for the utility. Well, the airport, you know, in terms of the transact, the nature of the transactions and its ability to support itself, doesn't meet the standards for an enterprise fund. So it's been reclassified as a special revenue fund. And so this would be a transfer that would go, and I'm sorry, I said eleven thousand seven sixty-nine. The transfer is twenty-one seven sixty-nine. It's an eleven thousand dollar and change increase. And that money would go mainly to match grants for an improvement project out of the airport. And then you've got transfers coming into general fund from the state accommodations tax fund. You know, we have some requirements in terms of accounting for that revenue separately. There are state requirements that we have to meet. And so twenty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars from that fund is proposed to be transferred into general fund. And then there are expenditures that the county has within general fund that that would cover. And so when you tally up all those transfers, you you come up with three point two, three five million, and that's the number you see right here in the the recommended budget. And so that leaves us with eighty-two point four million dollars in in all fund expenditures, less transfers. So that's kind of what the, I guess, the the hundred thousand foot level view looks like. If y'all don't mind, I just thought maybe we could get into the general fund, because I know that's really the the bulk of what we do, and I know that's always one of the, you know, most important considerations that y'all have is the general fund budget. And so what you'll notice with general fund, and let me just kind of go back here to the revenue and expenditure summary. I've got a lot of spreadsheets open. Here we go. Okay. We've got a large number of departments. In fact, if they, if you put them on the screen here, you keep scrolling and scrolling and scrolling and scrolling, and here's all your departments. So one of the things that I think is good that the county has done in the past is they created divisions for the purposes of budgeting. And really, our our chart of accounts is based on that. You've got everything from the thousand department or a thousand division up to the fifteen thousand division. For example, the thousand division, that's where y'all are at. County Council and Andrew and the expenditures associated with y'all, and Legals, our county attorney, are in legislative. And then you just kind of go on down, division by division, until you get to fifteen thousand. This is a little easier to look at, because there aren't quite as many, quite as many rows. And I'm just going to kind of scroll over so we can focus on the the recommended budget. So right now, what you can see are projected year end, department head request, administrator recommended, and then the difference between what we're recommending and what the adjusted budget for the current year is. That's that column. And you'll see in the recommended that we're recommending forty point three million in expenditures. Our revenue doesn't equal that. So there is a proposed use of fund balance there of one point two five million and change. That's about three point one percent of expenditures that's proposed to be covered with fund balance. And I know that's something that y'all will want to talk about. You can see on the screen, and I know this wasn't in your budget books, but because it was really off the print margin, but this just shows the percentage change in each division and in the total expenditures. And again, you know, the general fund budget is, you know, proposed to increase twenty-two point six percent when you compare it with the current year. On the revenue, because you know, the revenues are presented separately here, this is what our revenues look like, our proposed revenues. And we'll do the same thing, and just scroll over to hopefully simplify it a little bit. But you can see we've got, how many is that? Seven categories of revenues. There's property taxes, there's licenses and permits, intergovernmental, charges for services, fines, interest, and miscellaneous revenue. And you can see the revenue is is proposed at thirty-nine, a little over thirty-nine million. And then the use of fund balance would would balance it. I don't know if this this helps a whole lot. I hope it does. But this is a way of just kind of looking at, okay, well, what were the significant changes? And on the screen, you'll see the little, I guess, blue, I'm not real good with colors, but blue, that's the adjusted budget of the current fiscal year. And then in red, or or pink, or whatever, is our projected year-end expenditures, and in green is the administrator, the basically the recommended budget. We kind of had a baker's dozen, I guess you could say, of revenue items that had significant changes. And I, and what we did is we sorted this by those with the most changes positively, and then on up to those changes that were the most in terms of like a decrease in revenues. And you'll see that at the top of the list was ARPA. You know, we basically went from a very minor use of of American Rescue Plan Act funds, that was some of the COVID money, the pandemic money, in the current budget, to fully expending our ARPA money. So the the four point six nine two million you see there, that's everything. That's the remaining funds that we need to expend. What ARPA requires, the act, is that that money either be spent by December thirty-first, or that we obligated to be spent, at which point it would then have to be spent. If it's obligated by the end of this calendar year, it would have to be expended by the end of 2026. You'd have two additional years. What we're proposing here to y'all is that we expend it in the current year and that we do it by December thirty-first. So in April, basically this time next year, we'd have the ability to submit our final report to the U.S. Treasury Department, that the ARPA's been expended. So the big, the biggest increase here as a percentage that you see is ARPA. Current real estate taxes are up, proposed to be up fourteen percent. And that's really a combination of several things. One is that the value of a mill has increased, our projected value of a mill. We worked with Donna on this and came up with an estimate of a little over a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in the value of a mill. What we budgeted for the value of a mill in the current year is about a hundred and sixty-five and change. And I'm rounding just to kind of simplify it a little bit. So that's a, not quite nine thousand, eight and change increase in the value of a mill. But how it's trending right now in terms of actual value of a mill is more like a hundred and seventy thousand per mill. So we're looking at about a two percent increase is what it amounts to. So when you compare it to the budget, it looks like it's a sizable increase. When you compare it to how that mill is actually being collected now, you know, how our property taxes are collecting now, it's more like a two percent increase. So it's in, it's pretty much in line with what we normally do in terms of forecasting our revenues. The other thing is that you've got the community services fund levy in there, the levy that supports the library, disabilities, and special needs, and Piedmont Tech. And so, you know, if you budget the revenue in general fund, well, that's going to increase your vehicle taxes, your property taxes, and your watercraft taxes also. And then that money's being transferred out to the community services fund. So that plays a part in increasing how, what the revenue numbers look like for property taxes. And then the other thing, like we had talked about, moving the lease purchases and the installment purchase revenue bond from the debt service fund to general fund, lowering the debt levy, raising the operating levy, well, that's going to increase your property tax revenue too. So those are the really the three major factors, the changes with the debt service levy, the community services levy, and the operating levy, and the value of a mill going up. And that explains, there's no tax increase proposed in here now. I know that might be something y'all want to consider, and we can look at it, and that's be easy to do in these sheets, these spreadsheets, but there's, it's not proposed right now in this version of the budget. So that really is applicable to current vehicle and watercraft taxes in terms of the increase there. I guess the one that so far, working our way down the list that I haven't mentioned, the next one is interest. And you'll see there's a seventy-five percent increase proposed in interest earnings. And that really is just a function of what the rates are doing at the South Carolina local government investment pool, which is managed by the state treasurer. I mean, those rates have been hovering around five point six percent. And the staff has made a concerted effort here and in the treasurer's office to keep as high a balance as we can possibly keep at the at the state treasurer's office. Main, you know, I mean, we have a certain amount of liquidity we need to be able to operate here, but maintain a high balance as we can down there to maximize our interest income. And I think they've done a great job of doing that. And so we're just going to stay committed to doing that next fiscal year, unless there are some changes y'all want to make in terms of how we're doing that. And, you know, when you just kind of, current yields, I think are, you know, it looks like, just looking at some of the forecasting online, are going to stay fairly true to what they're, what they've been. Kind of dialing it back a little bit to be conservative, we came up with seven hundred thousand in interest earnings. I mean, we think we can exceed that. We just wanted to be conservative.
I'm going to interrupt you and say y'all are, to really be commended for that. That's not something that we have done well in the past, and that y'all have recently worked with the treasurer's office. And we're making money on our money in the past. We didn't. And thank you for administration and staff. That that's big. Thank you.
Absolutely. That was a lot of hard work, by the way. We have a lot of accounts. And even at the state treasurer's office, I mean, we've got a large number within the pool of money that we have to track and keep segregating. They put a lot of, a lot of hard work into doing all of that. You know, another change is kind of working down the list. This is the VC Summer Emergency Management Grant. And you'll see here, let me, I don't really know why I did it that way. Here's a note. We've got funding that we receive from VC Summer, basically because we have emergency preparedness expenditures here in the county for a nuclear plant that's right across the river, right across the county line from us. And so Dominion, there's an agreed-upon amount that changes from, it's actually growing from year to year, that we receive from them to help fund our emergency preparedness efforts. But in addition to that, that's mainly what had been budgeted in previous years. We also have some grants that in the past have been accounted for in special revenue funds that we'd recommend to y'all be in general fund. And I know we'll get into the special revenue funds, maybe not tonight, maybe at the next budget work session, depending on what y'all want to do. But so now that revenue is being shown in general fund, because the expenditures are in general fund. And more specifically, they're in the public safety budgets. And so they they offset. But it resulted in an apparent, well, it is a revenue increase, but it's got offsetting expenditures. And then there's a grant that Tommy Long is proposing to pursue for a training prop at the training grounds. And so the expenditures are a hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars. And he's proposing to go over, go for a grant that would cover those expenditures. So if the grant, it's a possibility we might not get everything we asked for, so he would scale back the scope of the training prop. So, I mean, the whole idea there is to make that zero sum. So that that's an increase in the revenue budget. You know, you know, we're a growing county. I mean, there's been a fair amount of construction that's been occurring into the county, in the county. And, you know, that construction has resulted in building permit fee revenue and plan reviews, and just all of the fees associated with development activity. And so we feel that this is a conservative forecast of which y'all could expect in inspection and other building-related fee revenue. The next item is a seventy-five thousand dollar grant. We were talking about this at the last council meeting. The ECBG just stands for Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant. It's federal money. It goes to the state energy office. And looks like we've got it to replace heating and air units. And we just targeted buildings that have the older systems, that have the old R22 refrigerant in them. This is, building's perfect example of it. These HVAC units date back to the mid nineties, when this building was renovated and occupied by the county. And they've got the old refrigerant. So we'd recommend to y'all that seventy-five thousand won't, and we will get into those expenditures when we get into the facilities budget. The seventy-five thousand dollars won't cover the full cost of the project, but it'll, it'll go a long way, and we needed, needed to budget that revenue, because the expenditure is in general fund. So that was a change. You'll see that that we had a change related to the school district funded SRO position. And that's a function of a vehicle being funded last year that, you know, we don't have a vehicle, recommended vehicle purchase in this year's budget. And so the way the SROs work, we've got SR, school resource officers that are funded by the school district, and we've got school resource officers that are funded by the state. And the expenditures associated with the SROs and those reimbursements from the school district and the state wash one another out. So when you have increases in one, whether it's, you know, when it's on the expenditure side, you have an increase, associated increase in revenue. So, but it showed up as a change, and I wanted to make sure that was explained on this sheet. An anticipated change with the local government fund because of the growth in state budget, you know, they've indexed the local government fund to growth in the state budget, but it caps out at five percent. That's the new normal. And so that's reflected in that number. Conveyance fees are 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 down with clerk of court's office. And then tipping fees, just wanted to explain this to y'all. So what we've got there is an assumption that we'll have a twenty percent increase. So what we've done is we've annualized the the expenditures with the transfer station. We've annualized the revenue, you know, the year-to-date revenue for the transfer station. And for budgetary purposes, we multiplied that by a hundred and twenty percent, because, you know, one of the things, you know, the revenue from the transfer station doesn't cover, completely cover, the expenditures associated with it. So the more waste that goes through the transfer station, the bigger that amount of money is in terms of the gap between revenues and expenditures. So we wanted to be conservative. So we took the annualized totals, we multiplied it by a hundred and twenty percent and for, in terms of the volume. And we're recommending to y'all, if you'd accept this, a ten percent increase in the fees. And so kind of what that would look like, let me get to the right sheet. It would look like this. A ten percent increase would take us from sixty-three dollars per ton on the first thousand, and then for our large users, each additional ton beyond that, sixty-five dollars with a ten dollars fuel, fuel surcharge. That's where, that's where we're at right now. What we're proposing in terms of a ten percent increase with rounding, just to keep it at a whole dollar amount, you know, to make it simpler to administer, would be going from sixty-three to seventy on the first thousand, from sixty-five to seventy-two on additional, the the rate for additional tons, and then a fuel surcharge of eleven dollars. So that's kind of going back to the the significant changes sheet. That's what is really in that total. You've got, you've got a nominal rate increase, but then you've got volume that is projected to be much smaller than what we budgeted for the current year, because what we budgeted was far greater than what we're experiencing right now in act, actually. We've had a lot less waste go through the transfer station than we initially anticipated, which is fine, because again, if you're, I mean, probably shouldn't use the word bleeding, but if you're, if your revenues are falling short of expenditures, it's not necessarily a bad thing for there to be less volume going through the transfer station. So those were just kind of the assumptions that played into that number. And then you'll see here, too, the last one is just the tribal funds are down lower. You know, the tri, tribal funds are a component of the ARPA. You've got ARPA funds, and then you had additional funds we received by virtue of having so much acreage of Sumter National Forest. And we are expending the our, the tribal money in this year's budget. There's no tribal money that would be left after that. That's why it's not proposed in next year's budget. And that creates this significant, you know, change in what's recommended in terms of the revenue budget.
We'll still continue to get our stampage fee from federal government on the sixty-five thousand acres, correct?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Is any, any change in that that we know of?
And the budget reflects that, not anticipating a change, yeah. Any questions about revenue? I know that's kind of like a high level, but, you know, those are the main changes.
I mean, do you think some of the reduction going into the transfer station is due to the fact that the city made changes due to our changes in charges for processing waste? Have you talked with the city? I mean, if we're, we're not getting as much, where's it going?
Well, you know, it it looks like the the volume from some of our industries are, is down considerably. And, I mean, I, we wouldn't anticipate that a whole lot of that is leaving the county, because it's just the cost of hauling. I think it's just a reflection. I think it's just a reflection of them producing less waste. And then the haulers, the, you know, the private haulers that have taken over the city routes, you know, it's just a variety of them that have picked up customers. Because the city didn't have contracts, it was just a month-to-month service. And so really, anybody could pick them up. It's still going through the transfer station, it's just under a different customer number.
What about, since we're talking about that? With the increase in the tipping fees and also the elimination of the mulching operation and handling of the yard debris, that is obviously going to have an impact on the city's budgeting process. They have the same fiscal year that we do in their budgeting. So I think it's only fair for us to at least keep them appraised as to what we're doing in that area because it's gonna impact their budgeting, too. I didn't know if we have already kinda given them a forewarning or if we, or if you're gonna wait till we get closer in our budget to talk about it, as a, certainly a potential.
Yeah, we really wanted to gauge y'all's reaction, not knowing exactly how you'd feel about it.
I'm, I'm thrilled over not doing the mulching, personally. I, I think that we've lost so much money on doing that mulching and, and. We run out of space.
Good idea to start with.
I was gonna say, that, that, that space is really finite, and I think that would force us into this kind of decision in the future. And the expense, I think, is up to a little over a hundred and twenty thousand. And, you know, one of the things I think that is, I don't know if you'd wanna call it a soft cost, it's a real cost, but maybe you'd call it soft. Or definitely not, it wouldn't be reflected in the spreadsheets, is that we have to, I hate to use the word babysit, but I mean, we have to have a driver operator there, you know, just to, to monitor the site, you know, to, to, to make sure.
It has a fire poten, potential.
There's fire potential, yeah. I mean, it just, so it really would leverage some hours that could be focused on roads and bridges maintenance, you know, if, if we no longer had it. And of course, we did a little bit of checking about what the alternatives would be for folks who are accustomed to having, having that mulch.
Are we only talking about commercial operations and limiting yard debris? Or are we now saying our individual homeowners can no longer, would no longer be able to bring?
We, we were proposing a full shutdown of the, of the site. And, 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 you know, not knowing how y'all felt about it, that's why we're kinda, we're careful with some of the communication on it. But, you know, the alternative, aside from just, you know, of course, folks that live out in the county may have different ways that they could kinda, kinda deal with their, you know, trees and limbs and, and that kind of yard trash. But in terms of having a disposal facility, they could accept, it would probably be the C and D. You know, their, their rate right now is thirty-eight dollars a, a ton is the tipping fee.
And they have a minimum. And so if, you know, if somebody, it, it, it can be a problem.
I didn't know they had a minimum.
They got a minimum charge, so if, you know, if you, you got a homeowner that's got a little, a few limbs and stuff they need to dispose of, they're not in the city, then it's gonna, it might be a challenge. Say we need to keep that mulching operation going, but, but there are some impacts to individual homeowners that we're gonna probably get some pushback and concern from.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I would be in favor of keeping away for homeowners to, to be able to level that, even if it doesn't mean mulching. Because everybody doesn't have a ditch to go throw it in.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Clean up your yard and then you got nowhere to go for it. To me, that encourages illegal dumping, they'll find some land somewhere in the country and throw it out somewhere. And so I, I think we, maybe we can investigate some ways, I'd like to see us do anyway, investigate some ways to, not, not the business sector, but certainly the private sector have a mechanism of, of getting rid of that.
Yeah, we'll put our heads together on that one. And in terms of the budget, you know, you, you might have noticed it in the memo and maybe even in the spreadsheets that, you know, it's still a significant percentage of, of the annual cost in the budget, even if you were to phase it out effective January one. Just kinda thinking, would you actually get that done by January first? Would there be kind of a proverbial run on the bank and then everybody that's got something takes it, you know? Before, so we just were trying to.
We needed to, to stop the bleeding on what it was costing us out at the tipping station and that mulching operation. But there's something we might could look at doing is, since there is a minimum and maybe we can work out a contract with C and D where we have prepay or either transport some material to C and D at a lower rate. We don't cost, it doesn't cost us as much to process it, but, but we also don't use our space and, and we can take small amounts and then wait till we have a larger amount and transfer it to C and D. So, I mean, just some things to think about, because I had looked at, at the narrative there and I thought, yeah, it's some good and bad, but we're gonna have to make some.
Are we still mulching like Christmas trees and stuff in December? Because I think that's probably the biggest time.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I, I, I didn't specifically talk with Mike about that.
I don't, we didn't have a drive or anything particular. I, I think the problem, because I went out there to get some, I think the problem with that mulch is, is this guy trash and everything.
It's got a lot, yeah.
It's not something you could just back up, cut truck and, you, I wouldn't go put it around my house.
You have a lot, you have a lot of volunteers, yeah, yeah.
Trust me, it's hard to kill it, too.
Yeah. So, I, I don't know that, we, we didn't have a specific drive that I'm aware of, okay, but I've seen some around us, but nothing, nothing specific to that.
And of course, a sizable percentage of the waste out there, if you, if you classify the city as a contractor with the registered contractor, you know. But then there are folks that utilize it, too, you know, residents, so. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll look into some of that and try to come back to you with something more refined than that, you know, that is kinda middle ground. Well, on the expenditure side, or any more, any questions about revenues or? Those were the thirteen that had, really had significant changes, the rest were just very minor in that entire. I think there's seventy-five revenue line items, when you look at the revenue sheet, really only thirteen of them had significant changes. So on the expenditure side, you know, I just kinda wanted to kinda hit the highlights for y'all because I know that was so much that you had in front of you to look at. There were two major, I guess, changes that really are at the fund level because they're distributed throughout the budget, or at least it was easier to present it at the fund level than at the department level. And you'll see here a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase in health insurance cost. And what that reflects is, you know, an anticipated eleven point eight percent increase in health insurance premiums with the state, you know, we're in the state health plan. And we're notified to expect that eleven point eight percent increase. The other thing is, you know, being an optional employer like we are, you know, the, the way we're handled is, is we're experience rated. So our rates are based on, really, it's sort of has these, it's fifty percent is based on our experience as accounting. And when we say experience, we mean, you know, health insurance claims, you know. And then the other fifty percent are based on other, primarily local governments that we've been grouped with. And that determines what our, our rate is. So obviously, the more claims you have and the more experience, the higher the rate is you pay. Or if the, unfortunately, the group you're paired with, the others you're paired with, if they have high claims, well, that's gonna impact you. And so increases are effective January one. And so built into the numbers in the budget is a five and a half percent premium rate increase because it would become effective, that's the equivalent of eleven percent, become, becoming effective on January first. But then there's an additional seventy-five thousand dollars that's budgeted in non-departmental. You know, we've got a number of different types of expenditures in the non-departmental budget. And so that gives us a little bit of wiggle room if the percentage increase is greater than that. The other thing is, we may get further into the budget process because this is fairly early, where we're notified by the state exactly what we can anticipate our X mod, and they call it a, a load factor, but, you know, what our experience rating is for our rates. So we may have to kinda refine some of this when we get more information from the state. But that seventy-five thousand dollars, it's the equivalent of about three percent. And so, you know, when you think about that, yeah, three percent could, could go a little ways in terms of offsetting a, a high load factor, so.
And correct me if I'm not thinking correct, but between last year and this year and health insurance, wouldn't the increase amount be somewhere around three quarters of a million dollars total? Didn't it go up like four hundred thousand last year? And, and then again, so, I mean, we're closing in on three quarters of a million dollars in two years of increases.
Yeah, I mean, lo, local governments got hit by an eighteen point three percent increase a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And it kinda bit all, everybody, you're right, yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, huge.
That's a scary number. Nothing to, I'm not arguing the point, I'm just saying to put that in perspective.
Yeah, yeah. And then, you know, another insurance item, you'll, you'll notice that workers' comp insurance is, is projected to decrease. And I tell you, you know, in the past, we, including this year's budget, we've taken a really conservative approach because, you know, you don't just take payroll with individual employees and multiply it by the, the rate for the cla, worker classification that applies to that employee. There also is an X mod, you know, again, what are our workers' comp claims and that helps determine our rate. Anything less than one is good, anything over one is bad, so one's neutral. We're a point eight six right now, X mod. We use point nine as part of the budget process, so it's still thinking that we're better than the average bear, you know, but not, not as much better. And then there are volume discounts, there's a, a volume discount for us based on our number of employees. And then there also is a trust-wide discount because we get our workers' comp through the Association of Counties. And so in the past, we have not budgeted those discounts, this time we are, but we use more conservative numbers. You know, we, we didn't give ourselves the full discounts and on the X mod, we didn't make it a one, we made it point nine. So we, we feel like we can achieve those numbers, but, you know, it's, it's not budgeted quite as conservatively as the past. And that's why you see, you know, that, that decrease in workers' comp expenses. And then just within the departments, you'll see the, the cost of the audits up fifteen grand. You know, we're proposing to you lower than currently budgeted legal expenses because, you know, we kinda, kinda changed how that's structured and, and that's in line with how our year-to-date, you know, our annualized totals are going. And we got a little bit of, little bit of buffer in there, too, you know, if we have extra legal expenses, that we can cover those. In the non-departmental division, like I mentioned, we've got a lot of different types of expenditures in non-departmental, but you'll see that we're proposing to y'all that, that you budget four percent of payroll for increases. And, you know, the procedure that council's used in the past is you adopt usually a percentage of payroll in the budget as a non-personnel expense in non-departmental. When you get further into the budget process, in the past, y'all have then decided how you want to distribute that money. And that's what this reflects. It's not adjusting salaries in the initial part of the budget process, it's just setting an amount and then y'all determine how you want to use that amount. Then you've got an increase there for payroll services. And that's just, you know, we had talked about rolling out the next module of ADP for, in this case, time and attendance. And there's an increase associated with that, pay, ADP is who we use for payroll processing. And it's, their software solution is what we're using, so there's an increase there. There are two budgeted transfers that have not been there in the past, like we had talked about. There's the one point nine three million dollar transfer to Community Services Fund. So, you know, the Community Services levy generates revenues, put in general fund, it's then transferred to the Community Services Fund. And that transfer is in the non-departmental division. Also is a two million dollar transfer to the Capital Projects Fund that we had just talked about a little earlier. And that's in non-departmental. You can see that we've got an increase in projected insurance expenses, this is our general insurance with the state. You know, right now, we're in the State Insurance Reserve Fund for property casualties and liability. So we're projecting, they, they recommended we budget ten percent. So basically, we just took the premiums and multiplied them by a hundred and ten percent, and that's where that, that number came from. And then the capital outlay for the new software, the financial software, we think, you know, will have expenditures in the current budget for part of that implementation, but it will carry over into next fiscal year, so it needed to be budgeted. Then going into, I had a little glitch here, the debt service division. I need, I wanted to show this to y'all because this is a proposed new division within general fund. It would be in the administration, or I say department, I said division, it's department, a debt service department within the administration division. So in administration, you've got county administrator, non-departmental, information technology, and then we're recommending to you debt service. And this is the short-term borrowings we talked about. So you've got the, there's a special source revenue bond. This was used to refund an earlier special source revenue bond that was used to build the Mid-Carolina Commerce Park. So we still have payments associated with that, next year, that payment would be four hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars. This is the installment purchase revenue bond, it's a hundred and fifty-two nine seventy-seven, that was the Public Works Complex. And then we've got two equipment lease purchases. One will pay off this fiscal year, that's the, the twenty-one lease purchase, that payment's one eighty-five seventeen. And then you've got one remaining lease purchase that would pay off in December of twenty-five, and that's ninety-eight seven fifty-seven. So that, that's a new division in general fund budget that we'd recommend. And for whatever reason, my link's got blown up there, sorry. In the assessor's office, you see some expense increases there, that's reassessment. You got, you know, more postage, more printing, you know, associated with that. We've got some recommended increases, about twenty thousand dollars in GIS consulting. And that's just, we've got some integration we're wanting to do between the GI solution that we have, you know, on our, on our, in the sheriff's department, and then also the parcel mapping that we have as well as fully integrating that with the assessor's office. And so there's an increase proposed there. And then we've got some ten percent increase for the solicitor. We've got a forty-five thousand dollar decrease for the coroner's office, and that's a function of the striker lift that was purchased it in the current budget. Well, that's not budgeted next year, so you had a decrease in the coroner's budget associated with that. You know, the sheriff's really been struggling, we're in a very difficult market right now, particularly competing with highway patrol and their salaries and, and what the state has done to make those salaries ultra-competitive. And so we're just recommending to you that you increase the overtime budget because we've had deputies that have been having to work overtime to help cover the shifts. And then on the capital replacement in the sheriff's department, we've seen cost increases with vehicles. And so if we maintain our current capital or vehicle replacement schedule within the sheriff's department, we're gonna have an increased expense because the vehicles are up. And so that, that accounts for the, the increase there on, on the sheet. We've got increases with corrections, and I'll tell you, some of that, if, if you look, it's not reflected in the department head column, but it's in the administrator column. I just thought maybe we could use the next couple of years to get our budgeted allowances for utilities and contracted maintenance up because we're gonna have a new building that's gonna have to be heated and cooled and lit and maintained. And so you're gonna see some cost increases associated with that. And this was a way of kinda easing into those. Maybe we could do that over the next couple of years and then be prepared when the new dormitory goes live, that the money's there to, you know, to operate it. Emergency services, I mean, you've just, you've got the two grants I mentioned that are covering the, the LMPG equipment grant and the public safety grant. Those cover some equipment items and non-personnel expenditures, moving those from the special revenue funds into general fund. And then there's a seventy-five thousand dollar vehicle for the public safety director, that's an increase. In communications, we have the, the, the final year of the upgrade to our communications equipment. You know, it's the system basically that assigns like a time slot. It's basically, you can have more radios connected on the same network that way, and they each have a time slot, and they, not only for communication purposes, but also transmitting like GPS location and status. And so, this is the third year of the upgrades associated with that. And then under rescue, you'll notice that rescue supplies are, are up by, by sixty grand, but that's more of a function of, we had rescue supplies and non-personnel and rescue and capital, and just consolidated them all, and not, not, non-personnel, because they're really not, you know, major capital items. And then there's a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars worth of rescue capital that's proposed there. And when you looked at the capital detail, you've probably looked at that previously, and we can look at it in more detail, it's mainly HERS tools. I mean, that's where you see most of that, there's some PPE in there too, but, but, and we tried to set those numbers too, and we're not just going to give you an allowance, I mean, if a HERS tool costs thirteen thousand dollars, then that rescue squad needs thirteen grand. I mean, you can't give them ten thousand, you know, you're not going to be able to buy a HERS tool with it. So, that's why maybe some of those numbers look like, well, that looks like a really specific number. Well, it's, it was budgeted, you know, to, to meet this need that they've identified, that they have.
One of the things we talked about on the capital, equipment, rescue squads, and fire, was the potential for EV fires, that we didn't have adequate fire suppression equipment to handle an EV fire. I guess we've had a need yet, but if more and more EV vehicles are on the road, we are going to have to eventually deal with it. There was some discussion about the state providing some of the EV fire suppression equipment. Has anything changed, has that happened, is that, are we going to get any assistance from the state?
I, you know, I haven't heard anything more on that, I don't know, Debbie, have you heard anything? Karen?
Yeah.
Well, it.
We can check on that, just see what the.
When it comes to capital equipment for the fire departments, I'm not saying every fire department needs EV fire suppression equipment. We, they don't, but probably as a county, we need a depository somewhere if we have an EV fire, that we have the ability to, you know.
It's basically run, ones around I twenty-six corridor.
Yeah, that new, the little mountain area there, we're always having.
The interstate would be more, high probability.
Yeah, and, you know, it's, it's too late to start looking to buy some equipment when you got a vehicle burning on the interstate, and you can't put it out. That's not a good place to be, so.
Is there, and, and we've, we've, and you may have noticed in the capital, in fire, we've proposed the, that turtle system, you know, it's the nozzle that can be used to try to extinguish an EV fire, so that, we do have that capitalized, but I have to check on the state funding.
The blank, whatever, whatever's required, I just need to, I just, I just think we need to have at least some equipment on hand if necessary.
And we did, we talked with Tommy a little bit about that, and asked him, okay, well, if we couldn't, because the blanket and that nozzle were fair business, if we couldn't do both, what would you recommend we start with? And he recommended the nozzle, that was why that was included in there, as opposed to the blanket, but, but we'll check on that, and.
And is that what, something that would be centrally located, I'm, I'm guessing?
That's the idea, is you'd make it a, kind of like a county-wide asset, yeah.
The other thing we talked about for a couple of years is, and, and it may not have been enough time to accomplish this, is kind of inventorying what everybody has as far as fire and rescue, because just because, and, and I say this facetiously because I don't believe it's the case, but every rescue squad doesn't need underground rescue or high-level rescue, we could, we could specialize those in certain areas. Has, has any effort been made toward that, that you're aware of?
Brandon and Tommy are working on that.
Great, great.
They sure are. The initial blitz was the air packs, but.
That brings up a question I have for later, but I know last year, we had, I thought we had money budgeted for doing an assessment on all the fire services, doing a big audit, and that hadn't taken place yet. Is, is that money still out there, or are we going to transfer it to this year's budget? When is that going to take place, because it seems like we're not moving forward on that with the needs of, of fire services.
Yeah, in fact, Tommy's got that in his budget request, and that was carried over, mm-hmm, yep. Yeah, he's got that money in, I'm trying to remember which line item it's in, but it's maybe in, in contracted maintenance or contracted services. And so, in fire, you'll see there's fifty-five thousand dollars for grant match funds, and that's an increase over the current year. What that's reflective of is the matching money for the forestry grants, you know, y'all approved that at a recent council meeting, where the county covered the match for the grants, this would fund those, assuming that all the fire departments that are eligible for it get it and maximize the grant. That may not happen, but at least the money's there to cover it if, if it does, which would be a good thing, so. There's also an increase recommended in the, the nominal payment that's received by our volunteers. It's recommended to go up to seven hundred and fifty dollars, and so that, you know, was a, a change there of twenty-eight thousand, six thirty. And that's budgeted within the fire budget, so that was a significant change. And then you'll see here, in terms of capital replacement, that there were some significant items in, in fire capital, chief among them, a, a fire engine. Now, I tell you, in, in, it's budgeted as a custom truck, of course, those trucks have gotten, you know, as you, as many things have, extremely expensive, and there could be some other options we could look at, but there's proposed funding in there for a custom-built fire engine, a pumper truck. And we recommended to you in terms of using one money for that, a, a one-time money for that truck, that you account for, essentially think of it as ARPA. I mean, you know, general fund is kind of a fungible sort of entity, you know, fiscal entity, but we wanted to make sure that any use of ARPA or proposed fund balance, that we could try to relate it to either an expenditure that's unlikely to happen during the fiscal year, or something that's one-time in nature, and the purchase of the truck, we felt like met that definition.
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but while I, I was thinking again about the EV fire suppression. City of Newberry may or may not also have fire suppression for EV, and if they don't, maybe the city and the county can go together and split the cost of what it would take, since, again, we don't need multiple sets maybe, we just need to make sure that if there's a need that we have somewhere in the county that we can access some fire suppression. So, that's another thing, maybe Tommy can talk with the City of Newberry Fire Department, and see if either we, they already have one, or we can go together and split the cost of it.
And depending on how y'all want to handle that, I mean, that may make the, the blanket something that would be affordable in addition to the nozzle, or could just reduce the cost of the nozzle, yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll check on that, just to see if we can partner.
One more question on, on the truck. Did the rural fire board, did they decide which department's getting that truck, and we're going to have like a little cage match where everybody goes in?
Yeah, so, so, I believe Tommy has, I, I, I should probably be able to tell you that right now, but I can't tell you the actual unit that would be replaced, but.
Because somebody asked for that today.
Yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, you know, the request was for three trucks, and that just wasn't, you know, possible, and so there's one in there. Now, of course, you know, if you, if you went with a commercial cab chassis, I'm not saying that necessarily would be the route you could go, but I mean, that would be another option, and I don't know how that pricing compares to a custom, but it, maybe it would open up an avenue with some other shifting where maybe two trucks could be purchased.
I was going to say, Mike could get two instead of one, I mean, I, I, I'm not advocating that at this juncture, but I think it's something to look at based on the cost difference.
Yeah.
So.
The time delay between the, sometimes the customs, you can get it quicker.
Takes a lot longer to build.
Yeah.
Packing up one screen, if you don't mind. So, the difference, I guess what we're seeing, right at four million was requested, but we're, we're proposing one point three. That's the, that's the four versus one truck that you're proposing.
Yeah, and I tell you what, this might be, this is actually the, the detailed version of it. Put the glasses on. Yeah, this, this would be the fire capital. So, you can see, this is, this is what was requested here.
Right.
And then this is what's recommended. And then, you know, what we tried to do here is just to show you, now, again, it's general fund, so I mean, all these revenues are going into one fund, and it's being expensed out, but just, this is a means of just documenting for you that we're not using one-time money for a recurring obligation.
Right.
Yeah, so all that's trying to show, so, yeah, like the, the, you see two point five five million versus eight hundred and fifty thousand, that's three engines to one. You know, the air packs, this would be the request to get us where we need to be on air packs. This is what I was recommending to y'all, is maybe just that we kind of take multiple bites of the elephant, and we just get accustomed to having air pack expenditures, maybe not every year, but many years, you know, so we have a, they don't all come do it one time, you know, we can space them out. So, three hundred and thirty at today's pricing, that's ten air packs, wait, no, thirty air packs, I'm sorry, thirty air packs, so.
And those are, I guess, going back to what Mr. Sees had, had asked, would, do we have an idea where those would be going? Or that would be up to Tommy to?
Yeah, Tommy would, would work with the, with the board to get.
Yeah, see where the life is on each individual one, to see who's in the most need.
It would really be.
Or life expectancy.
Really, at this point, it would be the departments that have the non-compliant air packs, and failing ones, and then that may trigger like a redistribution, to make sure that every department has the air packs that are needed, that are functioning and fully supported and all. And that's an air pack in two cylinders, is what.
And that's where, again, it sounds repetitive, but that's where an equipment list could help you, you could know that ahead of time and start to stagger some of that stuff around. Right now, we don't, we don't really know what is out there as far as equipment.
And I, I'm sorry?
You know, last year, we got some things going, trying to get, recover some fee in the tax money, put it into a special capital fund, so we can fund some of these vehicles and SCOT packs and stuff like that. Is that money going into this to pay for, for that, or we hadn't got that quite set up yet?
So, so we started that, we've, we've pretty much done that analysis, and, you know, it was a little complicated, because many of them are existing felos, so it's a little different when, when you do it on the front end. And so, it, it's more of a trickle, is how I would, guess I would describe the, you know, the revenue associated with that. We should see a little, a little blip of money in the upcoming tax cycle, so it would be something you could expect to receive by January, it, but it's not reflected in the budget. And I guess what I was hoping to do is kind of, when we get, I mean, it wouldn't have to be done after the budget process, but just kind of thinking in terms of not to overuse the elephant analogy, but, you know, given, given y'all manageable bites, that maybe we could do it separate from the budget process, so you could look at the details of it, make sure you're comfortable with the plan. And then any decisions in the future about bringing that revenue in would be amending the budget. It's almost like it's a separate, you know, analysis, if you want to look at it that way. It'll put, it'll put that money in one location, and then y'all can choose when you want to bring it into the budget to fund something. It's kind of, kind of how that could work, as long as you're comfortable with that approach.
Um, going back to the question on the, the number of trucks, and I don't mean to get, go down a road we don't need to be going at this point, but you brought up about the possibility of the air packs, of actually trying to split that up into multiple bites, rather than trying to do it all at one time. I think from the last public safety meeting, the, our committee meeting, plus the meeting that you and I went to, with the public safety folks, Tommy and his, his group, I think the information that they provided us was that the county's got about seven emergency vehicles, fire trucks, that were in need of being replaced in some way, shape, or form. So, and, and I think, I think I understood, once you place the order, you're about two years out before you actually get the truck. I think that's the, the lead time that, that they were telling us. My only concern would be if we're seven trucks currently that need to be replaced. We're buying one now, but yet we're two years out before we ever get that one. Are we, are we working on a plan towards ever getting caught up? That, that's my concern, all right, and, you know, I, I, I know you can't, we can't do everything at once, but anyway, if you're already seven trucks in the hole, you know, buying one, it's going to be two years down the road. You know, it's, it's growing faster than what we're getting.
To go away from, I hate to say it, go away from custom trucks, but, but to get a more un, non-customized truck, I think you can get more, more trucks that would get us back up to date a little quicker.
Yeah, your lead time.
Quicker and cheaper.
Yeah, your lead time wouldn't.
Wouldn't be near as much.
As much. Another thing too, I'm sure everybody remembers when we had a, an order this past year, where Tommy had to come to us and ask for a significant price increase over what we had budgeted and what we were told that it was going to cost, and, and so, we're going to have to, through the procurement process, we got to lock in some price, we just can't commit to buy something and then come in and, and say, okay, well, it's, you know, thirty percent more than what we budgeted, that's not going to work either.
We need to come up with a, a plan somehow or another to get us caught up, I agree.
I, I'm not, I'm not shooting at what you've done, I mean, believe me, I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah, I'd love it. And, and we had, you know, we have discussed over the last several years about having a rotating stock, emergency services, rotating stock plan, so that, whether it's with air packs, which we also need to do, or with vehicles, we need to have a plan.
I, I agree, and I, and I don't mean to cut you off, but I, that's one of the things that we discussed and, and I brought up, was, you know, the day that you buy a piece of equipment, you know it's got a fine line.
That's right.
You know, coming up with a plan for replacement, the day that you bring it into service.
You want to be planning on your next one already.
For what you're going to do to replace it, so, anyway. I agree with you.
Yeah, well, and, and I agree with y'all too, and that's something we're working on, and some of it really was the kind of the timing. It was the need in terms of the, you know, the budget calendar, and then the time it takes really to develop all that. And so, I guess one way maybe of looking at this is this is what appears to be possible right now from a funding standpoint, but that we're going to bring y'all a lot more detailed information to include the point that Carl brought up about this, the new source of funding, and then just trying to piece something together that y'all are comfortable with, to include the type of trucks that are being purchased, you know, to maximize the, the return we can get out of the limited money we have.
And I'm like Leon, I'm not, this, that's not a, a complaint about what you're doing in this budget cycle. In fact, this discussion about rotating stock on emergency services stock has occurred for years beyond, before you even got here. Certainly before this budget cycle, so it just seems to be a can that just keeps getting kicked down the road, so, I don't know.
We'll try to get something rounded up for y'all, that's, yeah, working with them, that you can review. And kind of related to that, I know I just closed the, the capital detail on the fire, and, and that's there for every department, and we can look at every item, but it's, you'll, you'll notice some increases with EMS, you know, that's on the, on the, what's on the screen now. And, you know, there's a, a thirty-eight thousand dollar increase in, you can see it's labeled quarterly payments, but the, that's the contract with the hospital to run EMS for us, and so, there's a, a increase associated with that, because there's an increase built into the agreement that we have with them, and so, and it's fairly modest. I think I would anticipate that when the contract, the current contract's up, you might see something a little more significant, you know, just in terms of, you know, they have, they have economics associated with, with running that service, and so, we, you know, we may see a, a significant increase there when the, when the contract's up, that remains to be seen. But this would be, just be provided for in the current contract. And then, the other item is the estimated cost of replacing one of the ambulances. We've got a number of ambulances, you know, the rescue side, it tends to be more age, on the EMS side, it's, and same thing for fire, with age, on the EMS side, it's more mileage. And so, we've got some ambulances with some high miles on them, and this is proposing to purchase one ambulance. It's kind of similar to the fire, it doesn't necessarily. It's kind of similar to the fire, it doesn't necessarily catch us up, but it's at least a step in the right direction. And then, uh, in talking with Tommy and with Greg Kitchen, who runs EMS at the hospital, uh, they feel like we're at a point where the remounts have kind of run their course. You know, the remounts are where we're buying cap chassis and then putting an existing box on the back. They feel like we need to buy a new ambulance. And so, um, in addition to the ambulance, that includes a power lift and, uh, a striker stretcher. So that's an equipped ambulance, is what that four oh three is.
Jeez.
Yeah.
Wow.
And then, uh, you know, under, under Public Works, uh, you'll see there that, uh, the, that, uh, there's a, an increase in contracted maintenance. That's a, uh, and we just budgeted there in Public Works, but that's a, a solid waste plan update that is necessary. Vehicle insurance, I mentioned to y'all the ten percent, uh, increase that, uh, the, uh, State Insurance Reserve Fund recommended that we include in the budget. So, I mean, that impacts not just your real property and liability you're toward, but also, uh, vehicles. So that's a, an increase there. And then, uh, we're seeing increases in the cost of pipe, uh, and so that's reflected in that line item. You see a ten thousand dollar increase there. And then, under capital, there were two, uh, you know, pieces of equipment that we were recommending to y'all that be purchased. And, um, I'll just show it to you. And that's a, uh, you know, that bridge replacement was just something that just did not look like it was possible for us. But there's a backhoe and then a, a tractor with mowers, basically a slope mower, an aboon mower, um, that, that we're in need of. So it's a backhoe and, and the, uh, and the slope mower. And then on the collection side, you'll see an increase here recommended of, uh, eleven percent increase in tonnage. On the collection side, we're talking about the convenience centers. And so, you know, we've got waste there that then has to be trucked over to, um, the transfer station. And so we just tried to budget for an eleven percent increase and then a two percent increase in the cost per ton that's billed us by Republic. And now they've, they've, they've asked for more. But, um, you know, we're going to try to hold, hold a line on, on that. And then with the transfer station, you know, I had mentioned to y'all previously, and this note just shows it. There's the, uh, you know, it took the annualized total, multiplied it by a hundred and twenty percent in terms of volume. Applied us two percent CPI adjustment for the cost for the Republic, they asked for five point two. And then, uh, you know, we recommended that change with the mulch. I know that we may not completely do that. Um, you'll see there's eighty thousand dollars budgeted there as opposed to the hundred and twenty-three that we've, we've actually experienced this year. Um, so, you know, that would, if we don't make any changes with the mulch, we would need to add some money back into the budget. But maybe there's that middle ground, you know, that y'all are proposed. And so we may be able to accomplish that within the eighty. And then there's a soft, some scale software too that, that, uh, needs to be, uh, purchased. So that makes up that number there. And there were a whole lot of, uh, well, let me, before I get into facilities, uh, with Fleet, uh, there's an increase there of six point seven percent. You know, we've got a contract with Vector, they're a company that, uh, basically runs garages for, uh, for entities. And that's a guaranteed, uh, increase in their contract. And so you see it not only in the Fleet budget, but you also see it in the Fire budget where we've broken out the cost of maintaining the fire equipment, the Vector expense, uh, in contracted services. So it's split between the two. And then there's, uh, there are two different types of, of repairs. There are, are vehicles, there are target vehicles, and those, these would be vehicles that are newer, uh, that are under a, a threshold for mileage. And maintenance, routine maintenance on those is covered by the contract. And then there's non-target. And the non-target expense, this would be for, just call them older vehicles. Uh, but would, that, that expense, the non-target is distributed across the, uh, the different budgets. So you've got, and that, that's in the vehicle repair line item. So I mean, you've got it in Fire, Rescue, Public Works, all down to like the assessor's office and, uh, building and zoning where they have passenger vehicles, you know, that have to be maintained. So that's scattered. If you don't mind, let me just show you real quick facilities, because there's, there's a good bit in here. And you'll see here the, uh, recommended capital items. Again, you know, this column would be what was requested and this column would be what's recommended. And you'll see there's a half-ton pickup, uh, truck, uh, replacement. And we're just recommending to you that, uh, to that be funded. There's also, you know, we own a good many parking lots and, uh, it would be very helpful to have a striper, a, a striper for that as opposed to trying to put a stencil out and paint them. We can just get in and out much quicker if we, if we had a striper. The ProPress toolkit, this is related to like copper piping. And it's just a, a lot better way to, to handle copper fittings and all. And, and, you know, it's, I know it's not a huge expense, but, um, it would go a long way in terms of giving our folks the tools they need to deal with, you know, those older pipes. You know, we had talked about already the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant, the seventy-five thousand dollar grant. This is the actual expense, and we try to be conservative here. This would be the cost of the heating and air replacements, the one fifty-six-three. So that's why you see seventy-five thousand of it being covered by the grant in this column. And then, you know, other is pretty much ARPA. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we wanted to make sure that, that no ARPA was going towards salaries or something of a recurring nature in expenditures. And so, it, you know, it's not necessarily really ARPA that's being used, it's, this is just for county purposes. So you see one, you know, eighty-one thousand, three hundred dollars of one-time money being used to match the grant to, uh, replace those heating and air units. You know, MAC requested a, a, uh, you know, a pretty significant, uh, budget for building repairs. It's in line with what, uh, has been done previously. Actually, that's all lumped together, I'm sorry. But that's pretty much in the past, kind of all we've really been able to do. You know, we just sort of put out fires when we have an issue come up with buildings. And so he's just recommending, um, and I'm sure it's been looked at in the past, you know, kind of a proactive approach. And you'll see that a fair amount of what we're proposing to y'all in, in sort of building repairs and upgrades are being funded out of fund balance and that other category. I mean, some of it's one-time money, but it's just items that have, you know, just, they're either timed to be done or, or been timed to be done, and we just had to defer them for a variety of reasons. And so you see Community Hall, uh, and there's a detail, I think, in, in your packet that showed exactly what, uh, we're proposing to do at Community Hall. Harrington Street, that's a little corner building here on Harrington and Caldwell. Uh, some of that could be accomplished actually in the current fiscal year. And if it is, it would give y'all the ability to repurpose some of that money for facilities. And we'll just keep you updated on that. But we wanted to make sure that was addressed in the budget, and that's why it's in there at the full amount. Then the Detention Center, there was work that, uh, that's required there, uh, fifty grand, uh, proposing the use of one-time money. There are some repairs at the Sheriff's Department, at the library in Whitmire. Alder and Treasures Building has some flooring and some, uh, issues that need to be addressed there. And then you get down into actual public safety buildings. And so we've got sixty-two thousand for general repairs. And then, and then we've got money allocated for specific items. Little Mountain, they were, you know, bay, or, uh, I'm trying to remember now. Exhaust fans, that's right. Yeah, exhaust fans, I was thinking bay doors, but that was, that was a different project. Then we've got similar, uh, uh, you know, some repairs at, at, uh, Maybentown. That was a drive repair and, you know, MAC measured out the amount of, of, uh, of surface that would need to be, need to be dealt with. And then, um, there are Whitmire Rescue, and that was, um, the roof repairs there and some Bay Area windows, about six grand of that. And, uh, you know, he'd like to get all of that work scheduled. And again, I know we're using some one-time money there, but there are items that need to be addressed. And, uh, we felt like this year would be a good year to, to address those. So there's, there were some pretty significant changes, going back to the changes sheet here, uh, within facilities. And on all the contracted side, you know, we've got a good bit of lawn, lawn maintenance, and then some refinement with the contracted services, so you see a reduction there. And then the rest of it primarily are buildings. And then, you know, on the utility front, the reason that you see a significant increase in utilities there is, you know, the, the departments had come, both Rescue and Fire, to the Public Safety Committee and asked that those bills be paid directly. And so the, the committee recommended that that be done, uh, to council or directed staff to have that reflected in the budget. And so that's why this line item appears to have such a substantial increase, because those utilities have been eliminated elsewhere and they've been added to facilities. And, uh, you know, we've got, uh, MAC and his staff that are monitoring those bills, trying to identify, you know, spikes in usage and, you know, is there an issue? Is there a water leak? Is there an issue with a piece of equipment where it's drawing more energy than it should be? Um, you know, just trying to keep, you know, kind of keep our finger on, on the pulse of that. And then the emergency services, uh, you know, training grounds, this was the prop grant. You know, there was grant funding for it that's proposed and the expenditure associated with the, uh, with the prop. And then in economic development, uh, you know, we're recommending a reduction in marketing. And this was just rolling, uh, it'll appear to be a separate site, but it's rolling the Economic Development Department's website under the umbrella of the county site. So, I mean, it'll have its own address and to a certain degree, its own look. Uh, but it'll be done under the existing contract we have with our IT services provider. So it was, it enabled us to reduce expense, because it's basically covered under our contract that we have now, uh, with that company. There's an increase here in site inventory costs. We just have a little bit of cleanup we need to do at Mid-Carolina Commerce Part Two, that property. And so this is a small allowance to do some of that cleanup. There were some items that were identified, uh, recently that need to be, uh, need to be taken care of. Um, and then I, you know, I put the capital outlay in there because I just wanted to point to, you know, uh, Rick had identified a number of worthwhile projects to pursue, but it just didn't look like that those would be fundable this year, uh, except for one. And that, um, is some signage at the industrial park and some, uh, upgrade. I really shouldn't say signage, I mean, it's really an interestway improvement project. This would be for, uh, Part Two and then potentially some upgrades with Park One. There's a source of funding for that, so it's not general fund revenue that would be used to fund it. And it's budgeted in the Capital Projects Fund, so you won't see that in Rick's budget. That's why that number is zero there, but it's, it's in the budget, it's just in the seventy fund, in the Capital Project. It has its own division there. And then those other two projects were roadway projects that we would just, uh, I just would recommend to y'all, we look at that in a, in a future year when we have a better ability to, uh, to fund those. Plus, we had a grant application for one of the projects that just didn't materialize, it got denied, which we've done really well with that grant program, so we're not complaining. You can just, you can only go to the well so many times, so FY twenty-four, twenty-five was just not going to be one of those times. Building and zoning, that, that changed, that thirty thousand dollars is a passenger vehicle. You know, uh, Katie has been purchasing very small crossover SUVs. You know, it's kind of an economical kind of purchase for a vehicle, and she's asked for that. And, uh, so that's that thirty thousand dollars. And that would be used by our code enforcement officer. And, uh, you know, we had mentioned already in the transfer section, a transfer to the airport fund. This would almost entirely be, or actually, it's, it's, it, uh, completely, or, or funds a percentage. The entire transfer would be used as a grant, uh, as a match for a grant from the FAA that would be used to, uh, have a consultant develop a master plan for the airport. It's called an airport layout plan, an ALP. It's really kind of our next step, uh, with the airport. And so ninety percent of that project would be funded from FAA funds. We, it's basically money we get every year by virtue of having an airport with the minimum number of planes that we have there. A lot of times though, what the FAA will get you to do is to accumulate that money so you can do a significant project with it. We usually get, uh, I think it's a hundred fifty-three thousand a year. So we've accumulated some funds now and we're ready to move forward on the ALP project. FAA will cover ninety percent of the cost, the estimated cost of the project. The State Aeronautics Commission will give us five percent, and that leaves us with a gap of five percent. And this transfer from general fund to the airport fund will cover that. So that's kind of, um, and they'll shoot our approaches and our slopes and, uh, the hangars and then come up with a plan for the future of the airport, uh, through our consulting engineer. And then, uh, you'll see the last two items there in the fifteen thousand division. This is contingency, and we just recommended to y'all a reduction in, uh, budgeted contingency and budgeted capital one-time purchases. I mean, really both of those in a way are contingency line items. And, I mean, really, you could keep them in there, uh, and just sort of kind of treat it as, as if it's behind glass and only break the glass if you need it. Or you could just not have any of that contingency budgeted and just amend the budget when you need contingency. It's sort of, when you think about it, in a way, it's sort of a, um, kind of like a one-time use of money using one-time money. So if it's in the budget or not in the budget, one way it's there and you don't have to amend the budget later in the fiscal year, the other, other way you do. So it's kind of, this is sort of striking the balance between the two. We're recommending reducing contingency, but leaving some in there that y'all would have control over. I mean, we only charge the contingency when it's approved by council, um, for something that's unexpected.
I'd definitely like to see some contingency money in the budget so we don't have to revise the budget when something unexpected comes up, as long as it's a, a reasonable expense. So that's a good, uh, good way to handle that, reduce it, but don't eliminate it.
And that's kind of the major changes. I know that wasn't all the details, but, uh, um, those are the, the revenue, the thirteen revenue line items and all of those expenditure line items that had some form of significant change.
I think this is a great time to stop and process them in it and then let, let, uh, council begin to ask their questions.
Sounds good.
One of the things with the airport, uh, a couple of years ago, we failed to complete our justification with a number of airplanes, uh, being hangered out there, and we missed a, a grant date. Is, is that something that we've made sure we're monitoring now and we're not going to let occur?
Yeah, on top of that.
Okay.
I know we had a little minor issue with, uh, um, some FAA reporting where an aircraft was being shown at another airport. We had to get that straightened out, but, yeah, we're trying to stay on top of that.
Make sure we have, uh, keep those funds coming in.
And we got a little bit of extra money too, for the time being, of the bipartisan infrastructure bill. That was, you know, first we had, uh, CARES and then it was ARPA. And then another piece of, uh, federal legislation that was sort of in response to the pandemic and recovery was, uh, the bill, the bipartisan infrastructure legislation. And part of that is funding for, uh, general aviation airports like ours. And so in addition to the one fifty-three in entitlement money, there's a hundred fifty thousand a year in bipartisan infrastructure bill money. But that's only, will last as long as that piece of legislation, so, uh, yeah. We've really got, I guess, if you count the Aeronautics Commission, we've got three sources of funding for the airport that are not county, that's not county money. Our own source money generated by sale of fuel or hangar rentals or anything at the airport.
I understand there is a, some desire by some to have some additional hangar space created out there. And I guess our, our aeronautical plan will, uh, probably assess that to what hangar space we might need and.
And, and also help us develop some strategies for how that could be done that we could, uh, bring to y'all for consideration.
Any other questions? I, I, just one thing, I, I assume we're going to talk about funding sources maybe either later or next time, depending on how much our mind can absorb. There were only, I, I, I just, I wouldn't say I spent, uh, uh, some time with this over the weekend, a rainy Saturday. It was a great day to dig into some of this. And really, I came away extremely impressed with the information here. Here we can see the relevance of one thing to another. You, you and staff have just done an incredible job putting this together, so I stand amazed at that. One thing, uh, that was mentioned tonight that caused me some concern. One thing that was mentioned tonight that caused me some concern is, we, we talked about going up on the sheriff's office over time, but the reality is, you're working the people who stay here that much harder, and people just don't stay around for that anymore. Sheriff's Office and Public Works seem to be the place that we're hurting the worst right now. I think we have, correct me if I'm wrong, in Public Works, we have two equipment operator positions we haven't filled in the entire year. And so, you know, it's not unprecedented that we've done different level of pay raise amounts to try to make up some of the gap. That's been done before for those two specific divisions. And, and I really think, and that's my personal opinion, I really think we've got to try to make up some of the gap. I know New Bay City just upped their law enforcement salary again, and so I really think highway patrol has just gone, we'll never catch highway patrol. When you're paying seventy-four thousand dollars a year, we just, there's no phenomenon that we can catch that. But I think we have to try to make some strides to make up some of that gap. And so I'd really like to see some numbers that would show a, a depth. All county employees deserve a pay raise. Everybody works hard, and we're having trouble holding people, but those are the two areas to me that we're hurting the worst in, and we can't keep employees in. And so I think we're going to have to, we're going to have to do something to start, to make up more of that gap. So I, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I, I, I think that's where we are, and I think I'd like to see some numbers reflecting that.
Okay, will do.
And the election commission as well, because we keep, we continue losing people there as well.
No, I concur. Me and, me and, we, we've thought about it, so I concur.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we'll come up, try to come up with something for y'all for the next meeting.
Got to stop that bleeding somehow.
Yeah.
We can't be a training grounds for everywhere else.
That's right. Anybody else?
There's lots of divorce.
Yes.
So being, so.
Do you want to go into the revenue side tonight? You want to take what we've got? We've been at it a pretty solid hour and a half now. You want to take what you got and process it and come back next Monday night? What, what's council's desire?
What are we looking at as far as time for the next time? Would it be just as much?
Well, you know, it'd be, it'd be nice to, you know, next time, go over the special funds and the capital project fund, but I don't, I don't really think that would take quite as long. So, yeah, probably kind of, maybe something similar. If we've got, because we've got some follow-up items y'all have mentioned, so we want to address those.
And I didn't mention my other one, I guess I should have, is I'm concerned about the amount of fund balance that we're taking. I, I, I think that's, I think that's too much. Even if we would, I think we've got to make some adjustments to, to do that. I don't mind using fund balance, because we've done it every time I've been on here, but I think a little over a million is too much out of fund balance, given the uncertainty of where we are today. So I, I do think we need to look at some alternative strategies for, for that, other than going that deep into fund balance. That, those are my two comments about the budget, so.
Right now, we working on how many months?
Let's see, we're, Debbie just updated that, that sheet. Where is it? Okay, well. Fund balance, here we go. Yeah, it's kind of what, what we're at. So we're at roughly five months.
Last year's audit report, I remember I had some comments about the fact that we were trending downward for two or three consecutive years in fund balance.
Yes, sir.
And we discussed this, whether or not that was just a cash flow, or whether or not we were truly decreasing our fund balance. And I would agree, we, we need to reach, you know, five months seems to be a reasonable point in fund balance. I mean, some places would love to have five months. We're fortunate to have five, but, you know, we certainly don't need to go below that. And you've seen, we have had, you know, in excess of six months, and we do, we need to pick a target and say, this is what we want to keep in the bank.
Yes, sir.
And then we don't go below that, instead of just kind of, kind of picking away at it. Let's pick a target, and let's say what we think is pretty reasonable, and, and then beyond that, then that's how much we know we can take from fund balance in the budget.
You can't get lower than that. I like, I like the mindset, man.
And I'm sorry, I highlighted the wrong, the wrong row. Yeah. Just trying to shift from eyeglasses, no. Six point one, you know, months is where we're at, yeah.
That's a comfortable place right there. You get much lower than six months, I think you, you're trending towards the same stuff.
Yeah, that, that really, the, the rows below that could just be collapsed, because I mean, that's.
I don't know that there'll ever be another COVID, but if it's anything else, it taught us you better have something in the bank for a bad day.
And, you know, and, and I don't know, I mean, I know we've been, been here for a while, but I knew that, you know, fund balance would be a concern. I mean, because I know it was for us, too. And one of the problems with having all these sheets is remembering where everything's at. It's just kind of showing you, you know, this is, for lack of a better term, a use of fund balance analysis, and I guess the idea here was that, you know, if y'all end this, maybe it's for next time, maybe just food for thought now and something we could do next time, or we could do it now. But some steps that could be taken to try to close the gap. And the idea is, and I'll just scroll down, is that, you know, we arrive at maybe something that y'all are more comfortable with. And it, this could be, you know, a combination of delaying certain expenditures. I mean, we do have, I think it's five positions right now that are vacant, that, you know, we could leave in the budget, but just not fill until maybe we get to this February or this time next year, when we can kind of evaluate the financial performance of the county and just make a more informed decision, I guess, on filling those. It could be, you know, so that would be an example of something deferred. It could be eliminating those expenditures to close the gap, or it may just be kind of looking at some of the items in the spreadsheet as, as a form of justification for the use of fund balance. And give you an example of, in fact, these are those five positions I mentioned right there, and this is the all-in cost of those that's shown. But along the lines of, you know, looking at the use of fund balance and, and justifying some of it, you know, here's an example, what if you just spent ninety-nine percent of payroll? You know, what, what would that be, or ninety-eight percent, or ninety-seven percent? Similarly, on the non-personnel side, and what this percentage is, when you look at these numbers, it's not total non-personnel, it's removing the transfers, because you know you're going to spend a hundred percent of the transfer to the capital project fund and the community services fund. You got the transfer station expense, well, you got revenue associated with that. I know it doesn't totally offset it, but, you know, if you reduce the expenditure, you need to reduce the revenue, too. And then you've got those contingency line items we just talked about. So, you know, if you take those out, and what's left in terms of non-personnel, if you look at like, okay, what if we just spent ninety-nine percent of that? Well, I mean, you know, it, it would reduce expenditures by a hundred twenty-two thousand, and you just kind of keep going up until you get to not expending five percent of budget. And in talking with Debbie, I mean, what we normally average is, you know, about ninety-five percent? So, I mean, you know, you kind of quickly, kind of pare that number down.
You, you can make some gaps with that, but I'm, I, I like to do budgeting like I like to do most things I do, and that is underpromising over.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you budget like you're going to use it all, and if you don't, it's a blessing. Whereas if you plan on not using it all, and you have to, you, you don't got caught in a bad situation. So I, I, I don't know that I want to depend on that being the case.
But I do like the idea of just in a cash flow situation of deferring some of the costs, if, if, if you budget a position for a year and you really figure, okay, it's going to take four or five months to actually post the position, do the interviews, whatever, then you can defer that.
No question, no question. I completely agree. Was it, it used to be called here the flow.
And there wasn't a whole lot to show you, like in the spreadsheet, you know, whenever y'all are at a point where you want to kind of manipulate some of this in terms of revenue sources, but there is, okay, well, if you did a mill, if you did two mills, and, you know, with an estimated value, a budgeted collected of a hundred seventy-four, one ninety, you know, that's what you'd be looking at, one mill, two mills. And then, of course, this would be going the other way, but if you eliminated the ten percent increase on tip fees.
Let me ask you this.
That would be an increase.
We got reassessment this year.
It won't hit till next year.
That's right.
Yeah.
Next fiscal year. You're saying it won't hit until fall of twenty twenty-five?
So the, the payments made on the new bills would be, most everybody waits till January, be January of twenty-six. So it'll hit in next fiscal year, the, the, the new values, and then the payments on the new values.
And until you would know what that does, I would, I would assume everybody'd be like me, a tax increase in that year would be off the board, because you wouldn't want to have both of those hit at the same time.
Yeah.
But that's one year away. That does not affect this year.
This time next year, we'd be planning for that.
Right.
But you don't want to do both at the same time.
No. No, you don't. Anybody anything else? Yeah, and that's, having forty-five minutes is pretty hard.
I'm good.
All right. Fulmer, you good? That's the hip. Cease, Mr. Reader, Ms. Curry. All right, we're going to take this and try to absorb it, maybe even go back and watch it again, to be real honest, to process some of the stuff. Comments administered, requests from council, are there any for tonight? I'm not going to go down the old road, just did. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Shealy? Second by somebody, Mr. Fulmer? All in favor by a show of hands? We stand adjourned.